Change my uh then up to say it or uh over to Boston burn to get my my so. And I've been a passport. Where. Nobody says lots of bird.
Twenty four. Busy button.
Really wanted to get on the Luxford. But you and three lives uh listen to us long. The Americans. And they're alive. Did you feel like you should have um did you have.
So Karen McCall is not gonna be here tonight if you want to sit next to her. You wanna take that mic because she's not. It's virtual.
Very good. You don't have to be scared. They can start restoring to be joking now. Uh in my. Well, also get a possibility to do this. Because we don't think this is such. But again, I'll say so again, it's probably. It was said. Place that's more. That's not a place. Right, you're right. And what's the other banks on the script? They're not far away down the jump. That was really pleasant. I guess you have big ones.
That's for the public at large, yes.
They were you down the uh last week. Get a little uh little of the stuff you do there for something for some hundred sixty five grand off. That's all.
Well, it's good in the little writers.
Yes.
We're getting there.
Bro, not fair.
Yeah, around the end of the. One six out here, one six.
That's.
Definitely enough. Probably that's uh two weeks ago. Something bad two weeks ago or good.
So we do think though it's it's. How you speak into the microphone and make sure that you yourself don't trail off or turn your head or or any of those kinds of things. Because I think there is a user component, no offense.
User errors.
User error.
Good at user errors. Change them. Fabricated. So let me know when you're ready. So welcome everybody to the uh. November eighteenth regular Board of Trustees meeting. In person and uh. I guess first of all, I'd like to call and order call the meeting to order at seven oh five. Could you do the whole?
Yes. Mayor Goodwin.
Here and I did basically told me so I wanted to call the mayor ability so I'm more approachable and I have to officially say that so that he can say that.
So we can put it in the minutes.
Official meeting, so I'm officially in mere ability.
Okay.
I'm a very good one. Um thanks, um here.
Mayor Petan Hold. Trustee Blake Moore.
Here.
Trustee Kumb Ismail.
Here.
Trustee Corvalon.
Here.
Trustee Severs.
Here.
Trustee Sterling.
Here.
Thanks, everybody, so we have seven items on the consent agenda. And um hopefully we have a lot of questions, we emailed those to Miranda. Our answers already, but I'm just. Um nonetheless, we need to touch on these um. Miranda basically says she wanted me to touch on you know liaisons. Do you anything you want to talk about first?
Uh no, just that we there have been identified in Board of Trustees liaisons and that resolution is in the packet for official adoption. Uh I believe the only changes are that Mayor Petan Hold is moving to the BZA. Trustee Sterling is going to be the Sustainability Advisory Board liaison. And Trustee Severs will do Mountain Coalition for Youth and the Youth Advisory Board.
Thanks, and I've say real quick Jesse that we talked Diana who was Mountain Coalition for Youth there. She talked with Miranda. And and I and we thought maybe the Wednesday night meetings, it's up to you, you can do either, but the Friday is kind of a marathon and kids are coming and going all day. And I think there's more groups of kids involved in a Wednesday.
Right, Wednesday is the um Coalition for Youth and the Youth Leadership Academy as well as the members of the Youth. That's on the second Wednesday at nine thirty.
I'm really excited to see proposals coming to this board from the Youth Advisory Board.
Thank you, um. Let's give him the blood to sort of.
You didn't first, it's first.
Anything else on the consent agenda?
Um I'll just note that we and I and I believe Trustee Blake Moore wants to talk about it, there's the housing study RFP. As well as the Big Strings Egress FEMA contract. For your youth approval, but I believe Trustee Blake Moore is potentially looking for some amendments to the housing RFP, in which case. It should ideally be pulled from consent for further discussion.
Yeah, the the housing RFP I think is fantastic, it's really good, I think it could be improved in two areas. One is to add the um budget amount of fifty thousand so that the consultants know what they're bidding on. Um so they can and then you have competition between the consultants on what they can accomplish for fifty thousand. And the other area is um the strategies listed. There's quite a few more strategies in House Bill um twelve seventy one. And um it also is open ended, it says you can come up with your own creative strategy to. Improve um the the capability for affordable housings in your um jurisdiction. Uh so I would propose that we make a change to that one statement that says um. Uh priority is placed on the identified strategies. But kind of leaving it a little bit open ended.
That sounds good to me, should we move that then to a different part of the meeting?
You should pull it from consent and have it as a part of the action items.
Okay, let's do that, and how about FEMA, are we good to go on?
You know, I wouldn't say Attorney Madison and I talked about it, there's really minimal negotiation with regards to a FEMA contract and so. You're welcome to, but I just want to caution that that's just gonna prolong everything.
No, that sounds great, um so I'd like to make a motion to move. Motion, if motion is there, anybody can do that, uh three point six to the second action item. Night and otherwise. Items three point one through three point five and three point seven and not consent agenda. Second.
Trustee Sterling.
You're muted, call.
Yes.
Uh Trustee Severs.
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon.
Yeah.
Trustee Kumb Ismail.
Yes.
Trustee Blake Moore. Yes, Mayor Petan Hold. Mayor Bentley.
Yes. So are we good on consent agenda?
See, those mean someone's got a motion, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the six items remaining on consent agenda, second.
Uh Mayor Petan Hold.
Yes.
Trustee Kumb Ismail.
Yes.
Trustee Severs.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon.
Yes.
Trustee Blake Moore. Yes, and Mayor Bentley.
Yes. So move on from the consent agenda into public comment on um non agenda items. We have two public comments, one from Mr. Conrad, following some needed work on roads and bridges. And another public comment was some. Drainage issues on Third Street. Any comment, anything you guys need to share about those?
I'm I'm wondering what our um plans are for the drainage on Third Street.
So uh Emmett Pelletier, Street Supervisor, is looking into an estimate for the drainage. And we plan to bring that back to as a part of the budget number two work session on October twenty fifth.
So VCHA is not going to be paying for this?
They want to share the cost. But they do not want to fund it in its entirety.
The the water's coming from Third Street.
Sure, but. And it wouldn't be an issue without their property.
Yeah, it's also.
It seems to progressively have gotten worse, I have found in that neighborhood. And it's like last time I was there, the parking lot was like half full of water and I guess it's draining. From their property onto the property west of theirs.
Right.
So it's just, yeah.
Which does seem like something that should have been addressed in the construction of that property beginning with.
Yeah, it seems like the people to the second, the neighbors are thinking that the problem happened after the parking lots.
Right.
It never happened prior.
So if there's a particular property causing the issue. Do you think that there is some discussion to be had regarding who pays for it?
Yeah, and it's good to see that they're offering to pay half.
I wouldn't say they're doing half, they're willing to cost share.
Okay.
There was no commitment to a percentage, it was give us your estimate and we can go from there, they're also interested to see how much the Board of Trustees is willing. To consider under the twenty twenty three budget. And also whether this is a financial priority for the town of Netherlands, I think that's something else. Uh that we talked about, it is whether this is the twenty twenty three project or is it a later down the line project?
Well, I'd say. Well, it seems to me it has to be a priority in terms of how it's affecting residents. If their yards are being flooded and they can't get to their cars without waiting until they have water. That means it's a priority, but the question is can you come how how it's financed, how the resolution is financed?
Yeah, it so reading the documentation, there was an option to like put a drain in the parking lot. But that turned out not to be a good option for some reason, so maybe if we have. Brand, if we have people who could speak technically to the issue um and the history of it, that would be great.
Uh yeah, I can, I know that they started with Nathan Scallion with JVA, so I could see if he's available to come join us next week.
Well, this is Tanya, um I will say that regardless. Of how this is resolved, the top of Third Street is a mess, it needs to be fixed. So while it's being fixed, maybe considers consideration could be given. As to how the water is gonna flow and slope the street into proper trainages um like was done in Second Street. Because it what what's going on on Third Street at the top there is pretty bad. I mean, someone's gonna break an ankle.
Sounds good, we'll look forward to hearing from Emmett. I did go um on the first comment from Kristen, I did email her back and forth and talk about her concerns and also encouraged her to. Contact town directly in the future versus. Well, what she did with that, I appreciated that and we talked about the present counter that versus social media. Email the body. There are no pros of social media. Um so are there any other public comments on non agenda items? Just like is that volume?
Pretty sad, it's true.
After you're ready, where your board lawyer addressed to. Public. I did a little calculation and you've got and been using fifteen acre feet of water per year. Apparently shares of additional, I didn't get uh. Which one it is, but I think it's farmers. So you have about twenty four, twenty five acre feet that you're not using. And I just did some rough calculations for my home in terms of value. If you were to run the rest of the water that you own through the taps and town. The value of that water in my estimation would be around eighty million dollars. Um if you were to consider another stream of income. Probably in the future, you might want to consider leasing some of the water downstream usage.
I I'd just like to make a correction on that, that our water usage um in twenty twenty was a hundred and seventy one acre feet. That's from the Netherlands Master Infrastructure Plan.
I talked to the water attorney about the and he said that was mixing apples with oranges. A bit of deemed acre feet is the arc of figure.
The the fifteen is what we're using out of priority and I did speak with him as well.
I appreciate the the conversation and I think, you know, it is interesting thought to think about. Potential resource we have.
Something I thought was quite good.
It's a good, it's a good suggestion, it's something indeed we.
But we need to secure our conditional rights before I think we go down that route.
Emily Evans, twelve fifty Yale Door Road, um I would just like to again say thank you to all of the trustees, apparently you are. Coming out on the twenty seventh, which is a Thursday at nine o'clock, to see the progress that the um. Youth Corps is doing on the fire mitigation out of the ranch. Just to let you know, there will be a representative from the Lieutenant Governor's Office that will be there. Several members from the um Boulder County Watershed that are gonna be there. I've invited uh members from the Colorado Open Lands who hold our conservation easement on the property to come. And um several people from the Forest Service are gonna be there, so I thank you for your interest and hopefully this will. Generate some more interest for private landowners to be proactive in a way that. Not only protects their property but helps the town and um fire is always the scariest thing we have, so anything we can do to. Create buffers, we want to do that, so thank you for coming and I look forward to seeing you guys on the twenty seventh, thank you.
Thanks for the invite. Any other public comments on non agenda items? Now we'll move on to our one informational item five one one today, the mobility and access for all ages and abilities presentation. Is going to be presented to us by Angel. Welcome, Angel.
Well, Harris.
There you are, yes, we can hear you now.
Wonderful, um so thank you so much for having us tonight um here today, uh my colleague. Um Kami Edson is actually gonna start off, she's our Youth Transportation Program Manager. And um she was the co project manager on this project, so I'll turn it over to you Kami.
Hello, yeah, thank you, welcome mayor and thank you trustees for giving us a little time tonight to come talk to you about. This collaborative plan that we've done with the municipalities around Boulder County. Um and as Angel said, it's about the mobility and access for all ages plan, and can you all hear me okay? Or am I muted?
You did.
Oh, okay, good, for some reason I thought it looked like it muted on me. Um yeah, so we spent the last eighteen months working on this plan and so we'd like to kind of review sort of what the plan was about, how we conducted it and the recommendations. That have come out of it, um as well as who from um Netherlands area, the mountain areas were a part of this process. So next slide please. Thank you, so really this project was geared towards coming up with a policy plan with recommendations geared towards the most vulnerable. Most vulnerable populations that are often underserved in transportation planning, so. Um and we really wanted to focus on improving mobility options for those folks which are seniors, people with disabilities. Um low income individuals and youth, they um are often not necessarily represented enough in transportation planning. Um and we really wanted to coordinate um and involve those who are providing transportation services to really learn what is working and what isn't working and really where do we need to go? Um so this having a coordinated human services plan, which is what this is, it actually allows um partners. To be able to leverage specific federal funding that we wouldn't be able to leverage otherwise without such a plan. And that's called fifty through ten dollars and Angel um can talk a little bit more about that. Um but it's the goal is that it's meant to be locally developed by partners so that the. Action items that come out of it and the recommendations that come out of it are really meant to be coordinated and shared among all of the participating partners, so even though Boulder County. Help facilitate the development of the plan, it is not meant to be seen as Boulder County's responsibility to um complete all the action items, but really work with partners and. Um really I help identify which partners might be the leads on certain activities and which ones um we we can step back on and other people are the better fit for. So um we're excited because it's the first plan of its kind in Boulder County, um next slide please. There were six goals and objectives, um I won't read through this in detail, but they are available on our website and in the plan so we can get more into, but I really want to get us through to where the strategies are, so I'm gonna skip this slide and go to the next one please. Um there is a short video, but in um just trying to ma- time ma- time manage our time tonight, I think we'll also skip the video, but we can maybe share it afterwards so anybody can watch it on their own time, it's about. One minute and there's or a minute and a half and there's community members from all across Boulder County talking about their mobility needs and what is and isn't working for. For them and the value of a plan like that. So next slide. So how we did this was really there, I think there was over forty partners involved and was all said and done. But we formed a technical advisory committee, which there were twenty five um partner agencies representative. And just from Netherlands, to see you were in the area at the time, um Christine and Daddy was your representative from the Peak to Peak um Alliance, Human Housing and Human Services Alliance. Um and we also had participation from Steven with, you know, You Think Up There and some of our affinity groups. But we involved multiple community partners who gave input on reviewing drafts as well as came to specialized meetings or specialized groups, as you'll see over on the right hand side. Those were some of the specialized group where we called um folks who might work or experts or have connections with youth and. Families or just folks with disabilities or older adults, whatever population they might be connected to and we would have focus groups with those specific groups. So all in all, this process took about a year to get through um all the feedback um with all of these different partners giving input on what should be in this plan. Next slide. So here's some ti- some of the timeframe meeting, sorry, I'm getting feedback on myself, so I keep thinking someone's asking me a question, now I'm realizing it's just me. But when we put out the drafts, we got over a hundred and ten comments from community members um on our drafts. Um and we work with a consultant Nelson Nygaard um to help um bring the plan to life and. And helped run some of the um community engagement groups. There was, it was the plan was also put out for public comment through a public hearing with the Boulder County Commissioners. And it was officially adopted earlier this summer um in July, so it is now an official policy document for Boulder County and for um partners to be able to utilize and incorporate into their work plans. Next slide. So what we have, what you'll find in the plan, and we'll make sure you have access to the link to the plan, um if you didn't receive it before, but essentially there are prioritized strategies. That are organized by need um and in within that organization, there are tiers, so some low hanging fruit, which are things already in progress that. Partners across Boulder County are working on to impact positively, impact mobility for our vulnerable populations. As well as tier one and tier two recommendations. Our implementation strategies and tier one are really those we feel like are can be met in the more short term, so in the next year or two. And then tier two recommendations are um are implementation items that really might take a little bit longer to achieve. And like I mentioned, the plan is really developed to have shared responsibility among all of the partners. And all of the municipalities um in Boulder County to help sure we can move the needle in the right direction on our strategies, so. Getting a little bit more to the strategies, next slide. There are a total of twenty five strategies identified in the plan. Um and pretty much after the executive summary in the plan, you're gonna see a nice colorful chart that has these six charts or the um. The six charts you see on the right is what it looks like, they're color coded, kind of how they're organized by the seven different categories of strategies, which include data. Access, costs, resources, service gaps, awareness and ongoing policies. Every one of those categories has a number of different um specific strategies in them. We want to highlight some of those strategies for you tonight, um so next slide please. So really focusing in on the data strategies that came up um amongst partners across Boulder County. Was really the need to do a Boulder County Transit Plan. Um Boulder County itself has already dedicated two thousand um two hundred thousand dollars for phase one of this study. And we're also looking into and we're pursuing funds to do a collaborative, again um in partnership with all of the municipalities and partners, a Vision Zero Safe Routes to School Action Plan. So we can talk more about that later if you're interested. Those are more on in the, oop, there we go, and then we have a couple that are more long term, but yeah, go ahead, thanks Angel. Um and then access strategies, um actually maybe Angel, would you like to take over from here and do the rest of the strategies?
Yeah, that'd be great, and sorry you were getting background noise from my mic being unmuted.
That's okay, I just kept thinking someone was trying to interrupt me, so I apologize for my stop and go, stop and go.
Thanks, um so yeah, the access strategies really are focusing on how people can access fixed route um public transit. So really focusing on um those upgrades to paths to the bus stops. Um and acknowledging that Boulder County doesn't really have a lot of bus stops within unincorporated Boulder County as much as what the municipalities have. And then also focusing on year round maintenance of access routes and bus stops. This is particularly important in the mountain region where there are bus stops because um there's more snow and people have a limited access to the few um. Like fixed route bus stops that we have. The next is really about cost strategies, so that's expanding affordable or fare free transit. Um I think that one example of this strategy is the Netherlands Eco Pass, Communitywide Eco Pass um. Contracts that you all are probably pretty familiar with, um so we'd like to expand similar models or do something similar to Ride Free Lafayette in more parts of the county. As far as resource strategies, the big elephant in the room is the driver shortage, so um. The plan really focuses on how do we support and train um drivers and have those drivers be retained at the organizations that they work for. So this is not just an issue with RTD, which I know they have a lot and a lot of publicity in the news about driver shortage. It's also all of the volunteer driver programs, the school districts, um so really on the widespread, there's a shortage of drivers. So really trying to tackle that collaboratively um with through the Mobility and Access Coalition. Also, um one element here for the tier two would be expand pot of funding for um competitive community projects. And this is something that we have included in the sales tax extension that is on the ballot this fall. And it is the mobility programs, there's a pot of funding in there that would be um available if it does pass. Um for some community smaller projects that we don't really have funding for at this point. As far as service gaps, um the ones that really um pertain to the mountains, I would say, would be a volunteer driver program. Uh which we did a volunteer driver plan um about three years ago. And then also something that's like piloting a hybrid connector service, so uh via mobility services and the Mountain Mobility Working Group, which is a. A working group of the Peak to Peak Housing and Human Services Alliance have been working on getting a new hybrid connector service available in. The mountains and we do have a driver who's trained and we're getting ready to start launching service for the senior lunches in Netherlands. Um so we're really proud of that, but really trying to pilot some. So we're really proud of that, but really trying to pilot similar types of services in the future. As far as awareness, it's really in the mountains, this would be a lot of education and outreach around what is available. We know that there are limited options in the mountains, but if we can talk about for Medicaid clients, Intelloride is the service that's available or via Mobility Services has the Family and Friends Program where people can get mileage reimbursement. And then just really helping people navigate the options, like RTD has accessory service in Netherlands specifically, and helping people with disabilities be able to sign up for that service. The ongoing policies, which are going to be really challenging to address in the first five years of this plan, they're kind of ongoing, are really thoughtful land use planning, which also promotes coordinated transportation. So frequently you hear that transportation and land use really are tied together. And a really good transportation plan really thinks about land use and how walkable or bikeable or transit-oriented the community is. As far as what impacts the mountains, it would be continue equitable investment in communities and programs. These are some of the priorities that Kami mentioned that we've already kind of implemented. These were the low-hanging fruit items that we already either had funding for or we were really trying to pursue funding in the middle of the plan. We also have some that we're seeking funding for, like Kami said, the Transit Plan, the Safe Routes to School Vision Zero Action Plan, the Volunteer Driver Program for the Mountains. That's one that's particular to the mountain area. So we're going to be seeking funding this winter when the Dr. Cog opens up the Human Services Transportation Set Aside. So we'll be seeking funding for a volunteer driver program. Here's a total of the twenty-five strategies. I don't expect you all to notice all of them. We do have some questions. I don't know if you were able to unmute yourself or if anybody wants to ask any questions about those strategies that we touched on.
I do have one question.
Yeah.
And that is, what funding is necessary for a volunteer driver program?
So there's actually some administration. So managing volunteers does require a staff person usually. And then also we want to acknowledge that there's a lot of volunteer fatigue. And just in general, especially due to the pandemic, a lot of people, especially in the mountains, really stepped up to help out their neighbors. And people are just really burnt out. So we want to make sure that we're acknowledging the volunteers through mileage reimbursement. If they're using their own vehicles or just in general, advertising the service also costs some money. So it can be a cheaper option than a fixed route bus service, but it still is a lot of coordination. And volunteers are volunteering their time, but you still have to manage and coordinate and schedule to meet the needs of the public.
Understood. Thank you.
So you're, oh, go ahead. Excuse me, your first question asks which strategies seem most relevant to the town of Netherlands? Such as tell me which ones seem most relevant to me, affordable, free transit, data integration, community services and mobility, youth mobility, bike safety, land use planning, equitable investment, and youth transportation resources.
Great, thank you. That is something that we have heard quite a bit, in particular to have access to after-school programs and just for equitable equitable access to after-school programs. Youth transportation has come up several times in the mountains, so thank you. Are there any other items that seem the most relevant to the town of Netherlands or would be good to integrate into your ongoing planning efforts?
None of Karen said these. I'm sorry if it involved your drivers and bus pass reimbursement and then we something going on under that.
Yeah.
I mean, the big question for me is incentivizing folks to use public transportation. That also meets making public transportation a bit more, not just reliable in terms of when it says it's going to come and when it actually does, but reliable in terms of when you need to use it on a more ad hoc basis rather than a planned way. So right now, the way that the that the bus from Netherlands down to Boulder operates, you really need to have a day planned for using that bus route. And not a lot, I think a lot of folks require transportation on a more ad hoc basis. They can't wait for two hours for the bus, a lot of times, to go down and come back up. So finding more ways to incentivize use of the public transportation in the mountains. I don't know if any of these strategies actually do that besides expanding the route. And I'm not sure what strategies might help, but that off the top of my head, that seems to be one of our, one of our biggest issues.
Yeah, thank you. And as many of you may be aware, Boulder County did do a mountain transit study. This was quite a few years ago. And we did have the Peak to Peak Connector Service, which was a fixed route bus service. We only had about two or three regular riders for that. So you're really always having that push and pull between how many people would use the service and then that frequency that allows for spontaneity. That's one of the reasons why we've seen a lot of success with volunteer driver programs in more rural areas is because it is a more personalized service that you could do to like connect people to the NBE or connect them to transit service that goes to the valley perhaps. So I do think that more of an individualized service might help people with those spontaneity trips.
Yeah, that might be the case. I mean, the other issue is obviously folks that don't actually live in the mountains coming into the mountains. And the vast majority of people drive for that particular purpose. And just finding ways to incentivize people to take the bus more often. And I mean, I've often been on the bus when it is not only full, it is full to bursting. It is absolutely overflowing when folks are coming up from Eldora. And when you see that the next bus isn't for another hour and a half, it seems absurd that people are packed into a bus to that extent to come up to use recreational facilities up here. So clearly, there is a better way to do this. I don't know what it is, but I know that it's not the best way now. Regardless of limited ridership on a kind of an ongoing basis for the mountain residents. I'm talking about ridership and folks coming from down below.
Yeah, that's great. That's a, that's a great point, focusing on like the transportation demand management for people visiting versus the needs of the locals. I do think that those are two different solutions probably that could benefit maybe both groups as well.
Right. And you know, there's, there are ways that cities across the world have dealt with this, but those are urban centers, right? And you know, many urban centers across the world and not just in Europe, but elsewhere as well have started, you know, implementing congestion charges and things like that to disincentivize using cars and to incentivize public transportation. So I'm not sure if there's, it feels to me like the only solution is a combination of both incentives and disincentives.
Yeah.
The disincentive that always comes to my mind is a toll on canyon.
Indeed.
I know that what has been explored also is a parking fee at the ski area, right? So if people have to pay a larger parking fee, then they're more likely to use transit. So I know that that's been talked about to varying levels of success. But that is one way to get people to change their modes is by charging for parking.
Interesting idea, but it also then would put more pressure on the town ballot itself to just basically house those cars that choose not to take the bus and drive anyway. And so we're just going to defer the problem to another place if we start to kind of target individual parking lots. I mean, when you see cars parked down the highway from Hesse Trailhead, right? And I run by them on a almost daily basis. It's kind of absurd at this point that there can be that many hundreds of vehicles parked along Colorado seventy-two there. You know, up to, up to a trailhead, I mean, if we start to charge at that trailhead, they're just parked in another one. At a certain point, a comprehensive strategy needs to be in place to, to start to solve these issues because it's kind of getting out of our control.
Yeah, great. Well, thank you. And
I have a suggestion really quick. My name is Tanya. You guys could figure out a way to time the bus to arrive to the, the school right after school gets out as opposed to just before school gets out would be really helpful. And as well for the people going down, it seems like it's not timed with BVSD school schedule at all. And that would be like a really simple thing to change to get more people to be able to use the bus. And I know we're just talking, but I don't really think we want to, I understand this, you know, telling tolls and ways to discourage people from using their cars to go down the canyon, but a lot of us who live up here don't go down very often. And when we do, we stop at eighteen different places and load up our car with goods that are more affordable or what we need for our special needs and whatnot. So I don't think that is necessarily to punish people for that. You can't use the bus to buy more than a backpack's worth of things, you know? So that works great for people who are commuting to get to their job. Once you're in Boulder, the Boulder system's amazing between the bike paths and all the different buses that are constantly rotating. So it's not a question of getting around once you're down there, but I think a lot of people, especially up here, we come, you know, I'm not going to buy fifty bags of pellets and put it on a, you know, but I don't even know what and on the bus, you know, I mean, that's just not going to happen. So I think we need to not punish people for driving, like some people were mentioning like tolls and whatnot. I mean, that's ridiculous in my opinion, but I think just timing bus so it works with BVSD schedule a little better would be helpful for people.
Yeah, great. I will definitely pass that on to RTD about the bell time coordination. One development that we're exploring with Boulder County Housing Authority is to apply for a car-share vehicle at tungsten village, which would be open to the public. So that kind of gets what Tanya was talking about, about providing car options as well. But I know that we're over time, so if you want to, if you're interested in mountain mobility, we do have a working group that meets this Thursday, we meet once a month, so I can definitely share my contact information in the chat if you're interested in joining that Mountain Mobility Working Group.
Thanks so much. Appreciate your presentation today.
Thank you for the great conversation.
Thanks, Arun.
So moving on, we'll move into our first action item, I think. We're in the, going with the CBD moratorium. Of course, parking fund moratorium first and then going to others. Does that work for you?
Yeah, either way, fine.
Let's go ahead and we'll go into action item six point one, Central Business District Commercial Parking Fund Moratorium. Last time for public comment, three minutes. Miranda, introduce the meeting.
Yes, so back in August, representatives from the Planning Commission had offered recommendations to the Board of Trustees regarding how to address some of the parking needs in Netherlands. And one of those was to do a moratorium on the commercial parking fund as well as the off-street parking requirements in the Central Business District. So before each night, we have an ordinance and a resolution. What the ordinance is, imposes a temporary moratorium on the enforcement of off-street parking requirements for businesses in the Central Business District as well as payments into the commercial parking fund. This is an emergency ordinance, which would allow, if approved by three-quarters of the board, would allow to take immediate effect. The second thing we have here is a resolution. There are funds currently sitting in the commercial parking fund and we are recommending returning those funds, which is what the resolution does. It directs staff to refund the money that is currently in that, sitting in that fund. So we are asking before each night to make two motions, one for the ordinance and one for the resolution.
Then three-quarters of seven is five plus, so we need to be six people.
Attorney Madsen, I believe, six.
Yes, six is correct.
Any, any about clarifying questions, first of all, from the trustees before we go to the public?
I have a question. This is Tanya. What, what would happen if somebody was going to build a residential property in the Central Business District? Would, that they would also be exempt from any parking requirements since we have a moratorium on any parking requirements if we pass this? Is that correct or am I?
Attorney Madsen, could you clarify if I'm going to pull the
Yes, that is correct because it's the moratorium on the application of it's, let's see, sixteen dash two oh two in the Central Business District.
Yeah, for me, that was like the only stipulation I had when we had this discussion was I'm all for, for businesses and whatnot, but if someone's going to build an apartment building, I feel like there should be a parking space for the people who live there. And I mean, not that anything's up on the docket to be built or anything, but would there be any method for making that happen or are we just going to be relying on the fact that a developer would think it's a good idea to have onsite parking?
There would be a mechanism. So for, for that type of development, there would be a special review use would be required. And under that SRU, then the Board of Trustees could assess parking. In the Central Business District, mixed use of that level does require under sixteen sixty that SRU be required. If it went to be like a large apartment complex. And so it's an SRU for any structure with a floor area of eight thousand square feet or larger or any commercial mixed use with over four residential units.
Okay, so I guess we'll
It would be up to the SRU requirements and the moratorium would or wouldn't apply or just
I would look for attorney Madsen's guidance, but my assumption would be under an SRU that gives the Board of Trustees and the Planning Commission the authority to make additional stipulations, one of which could be parking requirements despite there being a large program.
Is that true, Attorney Madsen?
I, I had a little bit of a hard time hearing that. So maybe if you could repeat that question again.
Can you hear best me or Miranda or someone else? Because I'll say, can you hear me okay?
You're, Mayor Billy, I think you're the, the one that's the hardest to hear.
Okay, I'll do it. So Attorney Madsen, the question was in sixteen sixty of the municipal code, it talks about how certain structures are required to have a special review use. Under the special review use, is it possible for the Board and the Planning Commission to require certain parking stipulations despite there being a moratorium?
Yes, definitely. So under sixteen dash fifty-five, I mean, one of the criteria is that it's generally compatible with adjacent land uses. Another one is that it minimizes potential adverse impacts on adjacent properties. And so a condition in order to minimize the adverse impacts related to parking and to be compatible with adjacent land uses, the Board of Trustees could impose a condition related to certain parking standards or parking requirements for that application.
Okay. I appreciate it. My wife thinks I'm too loud, so this is, people can't hear me.
I have a question. In section three of the ordinance, it discusses the staff to investigate, prepare proposed standards. I'm wondering if we could come up with a set of policies or guidelines for parking that staff would work with. I'm thinking of encouraging alternative transportation modes. Something about employing parking, maybe not property, but some way for employees to, to long park. Maybe cost sharing with the business for parking, ADA accessibility, shared parking between businesses. Just maybe we could bring this back to the Board of Trustees to come up with a set of guidelines or policies that the staff could work with when coming up with the proposed standards.
This is Tanya. I'm pretty sure, and I might be wrong, that this is just the moratorium. And then what's going to happen is I don't, is this Jim Reese or the Planning Commission's going to work on the guidelines that you're talking about or that we are?
Look at section three of the ordinance, eight twenty-nine, moratorium, parking enforcement. So while this moratorium is in place, staff will investigate and prepare proposed standards that they'll bring to the DOT.
Right, yes, exactly. Right, yes, exactly.
So what I'm saying is, would it be wise for us to have some policies or guidelines for the staff to work with to come up with those proposed standards?
I do think we can do that in the context of sort of a not a four discussion item when this comes back, that we don't necessarily need to bake that into this emergency ordinance.
That's kind of what I'm thinking, too.
That's fine.
But I agree with you. And is this ordinance number eight twenty-eight or eight twenty-nine? At the top of the, yeah, it's twenty-eight, but at the very top of the ordinance, it says twenty-nine.
It's eight twenty-nine. Got last week. Good catch. And this is a one-year moratorium? Please read the section three there.
It, it is drafted as a one-year moratorium. If we come upon the anniversary, a year anniversary, and board of trustees has not finalized any ordinances, made any co-changes, it can, it can be extended.
Okay, any other clarifying questions from trustees? If not, would like to go to public comment?
All the people who've had to face this code, none have been able to comply with the ordinance. I think you should just start over. Not have a more term, just the code.
Thanks, Arun. Any other public comments? This ordinance or this resolution?
Hey, I'm sorry, Miranda, we could not hear what the commenter said.
Ron Mitchell will just point it out that this is kind of been an impossible thing for people to meet. And so he's recommending that we scrap it altogether versus the moratorium. That's the just. Any other public comments?
I did have to mute and call on users and stars. Thanks for that person.
Hearing done, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period, and we will bring it back to the trustees for final.
I apologize, I don't have a whole lot of comment. I just wanted to see, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Andrew. Okay, thank, thank you. I've been having difficulties. Thanks, Spike.
We can hear you. Do you have a comment on this?
No, no, I just wanted to take that time to, to mic, do a mic check, so thank you.
You sound great. Thanks, Andrew. So we'll bring it back to the trustees.
How much is in the commercial fund? Go back to.
Five thousand, and I, for not to really fudely who the person is, but five thousand.
So I do agree with Ron that it should be scrapped, but I think that this is the fastest way of doing that is to enact a moratorium now, rewrite the code so that it can go away once and for all. From the legal process perspective, I think this is the fastest way that we can get is to institute a moratorium.
Um, so how about Tanya and Nicole?
I'm for approving this whenever you guys are ready.
I am as well.
Great. I move to approve ordinance eight twenty-nine imposing a temporary moratorium on the enforcement of off-street parking requirements for businesses in the central business district and payment into the commercial parking fund pursuant to article seven of chapter sixteen.
Seven.
I'm taking a roll.
Trustee Corbalan?
Yes.
Trustee Seavers?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mahol?
Yes.
Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
Trustee Combs Ismail?
Yes.
I would move to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-six refunding the money currently in the commercial parking fund to the pay.
Second.
Trustee Seavers?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mahol?
Yes.
Trustee Corbalan?
Yes.
Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
Trustee Combs Ismail?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks, everybody. We'll go ahead and move on to now our second action item. Hold back, hold on, we're from consent agenda, three point six, housing needs assessment request for proposal. Brandon, could you discuss the name?
Yes, so the town of Netherland applied for a DOLA grant for the housing needs assessment. We were awarded that grant and the food pantry is going to help provide the match funding through the occupational tax. This housing needs assessment will allow us to update, the last one was out in two thousand fourteen, to allow us to really take an inventory of, of our housing, identify our housing needs, potentially some policies, changes that could be made within code, and just provide us with a guidance for having them forward to promote affordable and alternative housing. So we had to do an RFP, so we can release it to the, the community for vendors to bid on. That is always in your pocket. This RFP was built on a variety of other municipalities' RFPs. Seems like almost everyone in Colorado is doing a housing needs assessment under this grant. And so we did borrow language from other municipalities. And I believe tonight, trustee Blakemore is interested in making some slight modifications prior to releasing this on the front.
Right, currently, it doesn't include the budget for the grant, which is fifty thousand. So it asks the consultants to, you know, apply, submit a proposal, addressing certain, uh, certain features that we're looking for in the, in the housing needs assessment. And then it has a criteria for evaluation of those proposals. Thirty percent is given to price, to cost. And so what I have seen in, you know, in the transportation world is that the budget is included in the RFP, so the consultants can write their proposal to that amount. So I just think that might give us better results in what we're looking for is an assessment that will cost a certain amount. So that, that's the first thing. So I would suggest adding that, the budget amount and removing the cost from the criteria for evaluation. And the other part is, uh, this, this housing needs assessment that the consultants will develop, not only assesses our housing needs, but it identifies strategies to reduce barriers to affordable housing. And those strategies are from hospital twenty-one, twelve seventy-one. And there's quite a few different strategies. Uh, the RFP picks out one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. And maybe there's fifteen in the hospital twenty-one, twelve seventy-one. For example, one that's not included is the use of vacant publicly owned real property within the local government for the development of affordable housing. That is strategy A. And then F is not included. F is with respect to water utility charges, the creation of processes to promote the use of submetering of utility charges for affordable housing projects and the creation of expertise in water utility matters dedicated to affordable housing projects. So my thought is that we leave the strategies in that were, have been identified for our RFP, but we say that these are priority strategies, which gives the consultants some flexibility. Strategies that they might find would be most valuable to the town. And of course, we're going to be involved in this process. And so we're not just giving the consultant free rate, what strategies they prove, they choose. So those are my two suggestions for the RFP. Otherwise, I really like the way this is written. I think it addresses a lot of our population subgroups. And I'm looking forward to the outcome of this. And the follow-on grant, which will provide funding for us to construct affordable housing development.
I agree with all of that. Could even just say, or all the strategies as an order, HP plus one at the end there.
So HB, the house bill does even leave it open
Right.
or you can, if you're, you know, finding another strategy that's not listed.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I would also want people who are responding to the RFP to be familiar with the bill. So I think calling that out makes sense. And you're putting, it's a grant, so let's just put the budget in there. We don't need, we don't need people to bid low. We can spend fifty grand on it. So let's get the most we can get, fifty grand.
Any other comments? Tanya, Tanya and Nicole?
Uh, no, this is fine.
Yeah, it's exciting.
So I'll, I'll make the motion.
Let's go ahead and make public comment on the housing needs assessment.
Hey, ladies, twelve fifty on the road. What's the timeline for this?
It's about one year.
The study will take a year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Make sure that in that study, that I, I hope they're smart enough, I'm sure they will be, to incorporate the needs of this area because that's going to have a huge component to the housing needs in this community. So, and they don't live here all the time, they're seasonal. So I didn't know when the study was going to be done to make sure that they're included. Okay, thank you.
I'd imagine they'd be looking at a workforce analysis to figure out what the housing needs are in a seasonal basis.
Yeah, workforce and housing challenges in seniors.
Any other public comments? But hearing done, we'll bring it back to the board for final consideration.
Yes, I move to approve the house, the housing needs assessment RFP with two amendments. One is to include a budget of fifty thousand, remove the cost criteria from the evaluation of the proposals, and to include in the strategies, other strategies from house bill twelve seventy-one.
Second.
Okay. Proton Mahol?
Yes.
Trustee Corbalan?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Seavers?
Yes.
Trustee Combs Ismail?
Yes.
Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
Motion passes. Who we have with the RFP? So, so we're good to keep going? We're finished up with our action items, then we can move into discussion items? Or is everyone good to keep going? Go to discussion of seven point one, the certificated deposit increase request by the Netherland Downtown Development Authority. Name will be presented by Ron Mitchell, Board Treasurer, Andrew Du, Duerton, sorry, I'm saying Ron, Board Vice Chair, and Kate Massengill, Executive Treasurer.
And so Kate Massengill is going to take the lead. And Ron and Andrew will chime in where you did.
Great.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the board of trustees. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person this evening. I'm Kate Massengill, and I'm the executive director of the DDA. Can you all hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure. Since this is my first time with some of you, I wanted to just briefly touch on the DDA and how we exist here in the town of Netherland. So the DDA was created after a vote in two thousand and five with the purpose of promoting economic development and improving downtown Netherland. We're financed by two mechanisms. One is the mill levy for operating and administration, and two is the TIF for projects. TIF is a unique mechanism that enables the DDA to use revenues from future increases in sales and/or property taxes to finance downtown improvements today. TIF is a new source of revenue, it's not an additional tax. And this would not be available, these funds would not be available but for these investments. DDAs in general are valuable as they have the ability to create and use financial tools and leverage other funding to finance downtown development improvements. If you're interested in more information, I'm happy to come back and do a quick presentation or meet individually with anyone that would like some more information. So with that, I will hop into our agenda item. And tonight, we're here to talk about the proposed increase to our certificate of deposit. At the Netherland Downtown Development Authority's regular June meeting, the potential to increase the certificate of deposit by an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was discussed. Additional information was requested reviewed at a future meeting to facilitate this conversation. At the DDA's regular August meeting, the requested information was provided, and this included the CD interest rate we receive, which is point five percent. The interest the NDDA would pay on a light of credit if you, if utilized is variable according to the Wall Street Journal daily published rate. Today is four point seven five percent, or at the time of this writing, it was four point seven five percent. If the DDA borrowed a hundred thousand dollars today and paid it back tomorrow, it would cost thirteen dollars. Two hundred thousand dollars would cost twenty-six, et cetera. The bank is aware of this borrowing concept practice and the reason for it and has no issue. The way the DDA's CD is structured, we would not pay penalties for these transactions. Additionally, it was requested how much is projected in TIF revenue. We project three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in TIF and thirty-one thousand dollars in property taxes for two thousand and twenty-two, and we projected the same for two thousand and twenty-three. Just to note, in what we discussed last week at our board budget meeting workshop was the DDA's proposed budget for two thousand and twenty-three is actually three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So the, given that there were three members missing from this conversation, the board voted to move the item for a final vote at our September meeting. At the September meeting, the board ultimately decided that this action is necessary for the DDA to continue to build credit in the event the DDA decides to borrow funds for a future project. The proposed increase was passed six votes to three at the Netherland Downtown Development Authority regular board meeting on September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Some consider, financial considerations. Per our investment policies, this action must be approved by the board of trustees. The two hundred and fifty thousand dollars requested to be moved into the Sunflower Bank CD is currently in our citywide bank TIF account. The funds currently accrue interest and will continue to accrue interest should they be moved to the CD per the board's request. Should this action be approved, this will bring the CD at Sunflower Bank to a total of half a million dollars. Our question for you this evening is, do you support the DDA increasing the certificate deposit at the Sunflower Bank by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And now I'll answer any questions you may have.
Boy, it just might be the way I'm reading it. Boy, it just might be the way I'm reading it, I don't think. It was a bit about if the funds currently accrue interest and will continue to accrue should they be moved to the CD. So I mean, they will only accrue interest at Sunflower versus Citywide.
No, they are currently accruing interest in our Citywide TIF account. And if they move to the CD, they will continue to earn interest. So we, we won't be sacrificing that, was the, the point to that.
Like quote, quote, in both accounts, bill accrue interest?
Yes, they cur, yes. So right now, we currently have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the Sunflower certificate of deposit, and that does, oh, and that does have, it does earn interest there. And as well as the Citywide account, we are currently earning interest in that account as well.
Okay, right, but that's a, that's savings account interest, not CD interest.
Exactly, yes, there's a difference.
We're talking many times over the amount of interest in Sunflower there.
Yeah, yeah, that is.
You questions? So the money in the TIF, is that money borrowed from the town's water funds?
So that is a mechan, so what happens when we come to you? So at the end of the budget season, when we all start in two thousand and twenty-three, once, and we started discussing this, we'll come to you individually with projects, and at that time, we'll have a resolution. And that's where, that's where the, the town's water loan fund comes in. And that, that is one then, one way for us to, to access funding. So after you approve it with the resolution, what typically happens is that then we come back to you for a loan and we pay it back the next day? But that, that is how we utilize the water loan fund to access money from our TIF savings account.
Okay, so the, the TIF CD that we currently have, is that money just money that was acquired at the start of the year from the town's water budget?
No, no. These are, these are current TIF funds. So what could happen, and this may be something that we'll discuss with you when we come back with projects, is that instead of borrowing from the water loan fund, we would go to our CD and borrow from ourselves and pay it back. That's one thing that we, we might discuss with you in next budget year.
I, I, I could jump in maybe, just to click, kind of clarify at least, not that Kate, you know, Kate, you're, you're doing a great job, and I don't want to make anything confusing. I think the, the goal that we are bringing forward is that, one, we've got a, a CD. We would like to increase that CD. And as part of that, we also want, it's twofold. We want to be able, because the CD basically backs a line of credit. And we, we want to be able to use the line of credit to pay for things that we already have on the books, whether it's parts of Big Springs Parking, performance-based survey, et cetera, things that we will pay for and immediately pay back. And the reason for that is to build credit with Sunflower Bank, so that in the event that the DDA ever goes away, there has been an established line of credit built that the town of Netherland can take over. And there's no, you know, hidden agenda of some massive capital funding that we, that we have earmarked for this at this point. However, the, the goal is, okay, there's latent funds sitting around, number one. With the latent funds, at the very least, let's get them into a CD. Secondarily, use a line of credit and exercise the line of credit in a smart way, like in a matter of, you know, paid back in the next day or two, so that we establish institutional credit that can be passed on to whomever, be it the town of Netherland or the DDA, if the DDA continues past its mandate. That's kind of, that's my thought in a nutshell, and I just wanted to pass it back to Kate or Ron.
Okay, oh, okay, and the term, what's the term of the CD?
Could be either one year, year.
They won't be able to hear you online.
Three weeks on.
Okay.
CD could be either one year, two years. Current CD will mature in one month. So we're hoping that you could turn this into an action item, so that we can roll the CD over in a timely manner. Thank you, Andrew, I think you and Kate have done a good job.
Okay, my last question is, has this been approved by Dana? Who wrote the investment policy statement for NDDA? That's the second document in the packet here. Dana approved the, the, what, your proposal?
Yeah.
From who wrote your policy?
No, she's not involved anymore. She terminated her services with the approval of the policy by the Board of Trustees.
Oh, okay, so I guess the policy statement shouldn't have been in the packet, then?
The policy statement is in the packet.
Yeah, and it should be, it is the NDDA's investment policy.
Gotcha, but Dana is no longer involved.
No.
And is this, I assume this investment is, is consistent with that policy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, this should be no surprise to any, I mean, I didn't approve of the policy, I didn't approve of the last CD, so I'm not going to approve of this one personally. I don't think, I don't think that it's a particularly good use of TIF financing. I think it's a deeply inappropriate use of TIF financing. This is, TIF financing is a complicated thing that is not very well understood. We're going to have disagreements on whether it's value capture or value sequestration. As I believe it is value sequestration, that is a practice of withholding public funds from the public, right, in order to reinvest in specific areas of town that benefit private individuals. It works really well when there's a blighted part of the town or an urban environment or urban center that needs to be reconstructed. And there's no other mechanism for financing. And TIF financing, I think, is a poor method for financing the DDA and a poor method for financing DDA projects. I think it's especially the poor method of financing projects that they don't get completed and are needed for the certificates of deposit. To me, this is just not a good way to operate. I'm not in favor of it, and I think it's completely inappropriate.
So I, I have a question, and this isn't meant to be antagonistic. It doesn't come across as a question that anyone's welcome to ask the BOT. I've been asked it a lot, last few months, is why do we even have a DDA? And what is it that the DDA does for us? We talked about this money, I'll talk about that next, but I just, it's not, it's meant to be just a genuine question. Why do we have a DDA, and what does it do for them?
Probably about thirty years ago, the state legislature decided that many of the downtowns in the Colorado area needed improvement. I mean, we're looking for a way to find a financial mechanism that can do it. So they enacted the statute, which allows a downtown business area to tax itself and have a board of directors that decides what to use the tax money for. However, they were a little bit reluctant to let those groups have total free rein, and they said that the governing body had to make the final approval upon projects, which I think was a wise decision. So we have them because of the foresight of the legislature probably thirty or forty years ago. And many DDAs have been very successful. Longmont just completed a parking garage, paid for by the DDA, that cost them three million dollars. The business community is really appreciative of having that parking facility. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, that, that generally answers good history on, on DDAs. I think, when I think about money, which I, I understand we can borrow in thirteen bucks every, a thousand every day, or we could use it. I think all these people who have questions about why we, Netherland, have a DDA to degree is, is or isn't giving them results, I wonder, we, would it be better off spending? Shows we have a DDA.
Can I jump in real quick? This is Tanya.
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, we are desperately trying to bring projects to volition and spend it. But sorry, Tanya, go ahead.
I wanted to say that you guys are actually getting things done, as opposed to, seems like other aspects of government move a lot slower, the DDA being a smaller group that actually has money and doesn't always have to be looking for grants to get things done, creates pretty quickly, like the public arts. Boom, we've already got three murals done. We've got, the, the beautification program has been going on for a few years without, you know, there is room for improvement on that, and it could expand, but there is money. And if the DDA and public support wanted that to expand more, it could happen. The parking that's happening at Big Springs Drive, and if anyone's familiar with that edge, it was really bad. The water situation there was a, was a mess. It looks great. Yeah, it took some time, but it would take maybe longer if you were looking for a grant to pay for it. We match grants, that town comes up with us and asks us to match things like Dr. Cog. It's, we, we, we offset expenses for many of the festivals that occur in town that honestly, like, towns should be actually doing, but they don't have the money. But the DDA does, and so they help support things like the farmer's market Harvest Fest by giving a small modest grant for that, and the Wine Fest, and Frozen Deck Eye Days, they help offset all those costs. They're going to provide traffic control on Halloween by the carousel and maybe another location that, that isn't happening because town is doing it. When you see that person there, it's because the DDA put our money, tax money, to that good use. And I, I think, in this regard, for this particular plan, there really isn't anything to be too concerned about as far as are you going to lose the money? It's not the stock market, we're not, it's not a gamble. It's just a method so that there is money, enough money that's actually accruing a smaller bit of interest, but more than what it's basically getting nothing at the bank. And also allowing this whole borrowing thing, it's just so that if an emergency were to recur, well, we had to put a million dollars into something right now, we couldn't wait for a grant, we couldn't wait for a study, we couldn't wait for three years for things to get done, we could get the money. And if, if you don't have that, you would be waiting for a grant. And, you know, perhaps your road would collapse, and you'd have to have a no-walking-on-this-road. And, and I also argue to say that our downtown has blighted characteristics about it, that slowly but surely, it's going to start to look better. But all that is going to take the work of many, many organizations in our town, and one of them being the DDA.
Well, and also, I will give a couple of examples. Where the DDA stepped in and helped the town. When the town's new garage was being built, there was not enough money to underground the electricity. They came to the DDA, and even, even though it was out of the DA district, the DDA supplied the funds for that undergrounding. And then when we started having trouble with people breaking into the restrooms at the business center, the DDA paid for the rolling steel door that covers both of the restroom doors. So there have been uses that have come up that were urgent and necessary. But again, Andrew hit the point that this exercise is to establish credit. And if we have a line of credit that is backed by a CD of a half a million, and we've proven to the bank that we're a reliable customer, we pay it back every time, conceivably, we could borrow a million dollars based on our credit and be able to prove we could pay it back. So the, this concept is a tool for adding support to DDA projects. It's not a DDA project. It's a tool that gives us greater leverage to make the thing succeed in the way the law was designed. I hope I'm making sense to particularly.
What's so key to understand is that the DDA does not tax itself for projects, only for upgrading.
No, we tax ourselves for projects.
It is not the DDA's funds, this language that we keep on using that describes the funding as the DDA's funds is inaccurate. This is town funds that we are foregoing in the future in favor of the now. This is funds.
Well, it's the taxpayers, one of the other DDAs that custody another money.
But, well, and I would just say, if there.
Our towns.
Correct. And if, if there were viable, sensible projects that we could pay for right now that would help town, we would be, those would be what we would be talking about now.
But every year, we come to you, come with a budget that says, here are the projects that we want to complete for this year, and every year, those don't actually happen. So.
Well, that's, I disagree, I totally disagree. That's not the case. And you were not at our meeting last week where we did give an update on our progress, on our projects. And I do understand that that has been true in the past, but this past year, that is no longer the case, and we aren't carry, having any carryover. And that was discussed with the BOT at our meeting last week.
All right, so of the six hundred and something thousand dollars that was approved last year, every single penny is being spent this year?
That wasn't the amount that was approved last year for the DDA.
We're going to different numbers.
And Eric, you have to remember, this is all run by volunteers except for Kate, who, you know, and it's not like other organizations are getting that much done based on volunteers. They're only going to budget what they know they can get done. You're not going to, like, have this, let's make this with all of our money, but if there's not a human being. It won't happen.
I have a, I have a couple of questions. Can I?
Yeah, I just want to finish the thought by saying, maybe, I have some more things around the CD still, but maybe the DDA would do well to do a bit of a PR campaign to let people know everything that you do, because I think a lot of folks assumed the whole Big Springs Parking was dumb. And, 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 and that maybe the DDA is not getting known for what it actually does. And it's just a recommendation, because I think ultimately the town needs to be shown why they have a DDA, and ultimately, if they believe it's serving the town, they'll be, they'll support the DDA, because they'll see it as a value for it.
Thank you, that's really helpful feedback.
In all that foregone revenue, could it be put into a capital improvement fund that could be administered by this board and by the town as a whole? There's no need for these projects to be done by the DDA. It's completely unnecessary.
Well, that's, that's really, that's a difference in understanding, because this money would not exist but for the people in the district voting to approve to have this increment funding. And that's what it is, it's an increment based on this. And that baseline would not have been established, and you wouldn't, it would not be the same level of revenue. And our attorney has discussed this, and I'm happy to bring him in to discuss this further, to clarify where the line is, because we're not taking money from the general fund. And I think that that's a misnomer, that really does need to be discussed. And I'm happy to bring back our attorney to have this conversation.
There is no such thing as free money. No money is created out of thin air.
It's not free money, the packs, the property owners in the district are paying that.
Eric, I'd like to say that maybe that is a good idea. That Kate, you know, you come in here and really help us understand better of where this money comes from. It isn't the DDAs, is it the towns, like, it's, it is the taxpayers. That is, that is actually who money is, but I hope I guess understanding it later in time, I think, would be helpful. But I'd like to hear Karen's question.
So, yeah, I think I understand the finances pretty well of the DDA. I think it'd be great to have, have someone from DDA come in and get everyone on the same page as to the property tax versus the tax for administration of the DDA. But anyhow, so for the line of credit and borrowing on this, on the CD, does the BOT approve that? Because it seems like if we're going out for like a loan of a million dollars, that's something that the BOT would need to approve.
I have a question, what kind of credit, how is our credit with Sunflower now? Like, do we know what our credit limit is? But so we assume that if we put two hundred and fifty more in there, we could borrow twice as much?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So really, then we. So really, then we can borrow $500,000 right now by that logic?
That's correct. Well, if you.
Or we could just have it in our bank.
Tomorrow, we have the line of credit of half a million dollars.
Oh, okay. I was just concerned about borrowing more than we have in the CD. But it sounds like we can't do that. And then my last question is, there were three DDA members who voted against putting this 250,000 into a CD. And so I was wondering if Kate could share why they voted against it.
They didn't feel it was necessary. I believe Barb Hart is on and she's our chair and she voted against it. Barb, if you wanted to correct me, but that was what I picked up on. Barb, go ahead.
Yeah, that's, that is basically the way that I felt about it. And the other two members that voted against it was that we don't have any impending projects that we need to have a million dollar line of credit for. So there was no sense moving the money when it is safe and sound in our local bank and earning interest in our local bank and supporting our local community.
I'd like to, I answered this again, that a line of credit is established over a period of time. You don't get credit if you just walk in and ask for it. You have to have a proven track record over a period of time that you have paid back reliably and that you're, you can be trusted. So then your line of credit exceeds the amount of your certificate of deposit because you have the trust of the bank that you have the ability to pay back what you borrow.
So at that point, you can borrow more than, you can buy or you borrow a higher amount of money than you actually have in the CD.
Yes, if you establish a line of credit over a period of time. And normally, it has to be over a year.
So it it seems like that's something that the BOT would need to approve.
Yes, certainly. That's, that's in the statute, the financial projects. And it's also in our investment policy. And I believe it makes good sense because if I can't explain it to you, Kate can't explain it to you and Andrew can't explain it to you, then you're not going to vote for it. And this is, it's a tool, it's a mechanism to help our downtown. And it's a moot point as to whose it is. It belongs to all of us.
Right. And and I would just say at the end of the day, you know, I, my heart's not going to be broken if this is voted down. It's in my, in my opinion, a smart move for the town. That's all.
Just, thanks, Andrew. I just want to say I'm in support of this. I feel like this is the best financial practice that is established all over. Regardless, this is my understanding of best financial practice. And I'm in support of it. I feel like the town should be following suit with what the DDA is proposing as a, as a model here. And I'd like for us to move on and take a vote. I'd like to move it to an action item and approve it.
Second motion.
So there's a motion and a second to move it to an action item. Thank you. So trustee Severs makes the motion to move the this certificate of deposit increase request for the Maryland Downtown Development Authority from a discussion item to an action.
I'm commenting with a trustee line of credit.
Thank you. Well.
Well, you also haven't done public comment yet. So I don't know if you wanted to, that doesn't impact this current motion, but just. You could take the roll call for this motion to move it to action if you'd like to do that.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's do that because we need to have a very. Probably don't comment on it. So go ahead and take the roll, please.
Trustee Coombs is now.
No.
Trustee Blakenmore.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallon.
Yes.
Trustee Severs.
Yes.
Mayor Prosthamhold.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
No.
Motion passes.
Passes, thanks. So this will be moved to an action item, which we should do right now.
I would do public comment now.
So we'll do some public comment, something on it as a discussion item and then.
No, no, you can take public comment as an action item.
Okay, thanks. We would like to open this up for public comment on this CD increase request by the DDA as an action item. If you're out there and you're trying to talk, press R six. Public comments in the room or online. Right now, we will bring it, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to. Yes, I, I would just, actually, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm in favor of our money in the bank earning more interest. However, I'm not in favor of generating a line of credit, nor in favor of putting of not using the TIF funding, the property tax that is available for TIF funding for improvements in the central business district. So I'm a little torn on this one. Not quite sure yet.
Well, kind of. It's ready. You know where I'm at? Yep. And then I want to hear from, we want to hear Paul and I just want to hear your final thoughts.
Okay. Well, I'm in favor of this. I was at the discussion with the DDA. I think it, it does, it makes sense. It's, it's low risk and I think the line of credit, and I don't think people are fully following. It's not like we're just going to borrow money. It would definitely come before the BOT. It would be if there were an emergency. And that's the thing that nobody really thinks about because some people are like, well, why would we want more money? We have enough money to do our projects, more than enough. But it's if something unforeseen were to occur, that that's all. It's just, it's not like it's going to happen, hopefully never. But you need to have that credit available for when you have that emergency because then it's too late to establish credit when, I mean, you guys understand. It's, it's not complicated financial stuff that's going on here. And so I'm also like, Andrew, like, you know, if it doesn't pass, I don't think it's going to make or break anything. But it, it is an important financial policy that I think we should be following. That's all. Thank you.
I don't have much to add other than what I see it does is it presents fiscal agility. So that, again, as folks are saying, it builds credit for future use. I understand that is the part that is torn a little bit is, you know, not being able to use it for current. But I think the long-term investment, the long-term benefit and is worthwhile. And I think it's worth, I think it's worth trialing out.
Oh, this is Tanya. I do want to add that when what we were told at the DDA meeting, there's no penalty for pulling out the money next week if we need it, like, so we can use it now. Not like it's tied up. And I love that word fiscal agility. That's really good. Thank you.
No problem. You can coin it all you want.
I didn't. Oh, go ahead and go.
Yeah, there's no reason why we can't have mindsets of kind of thinking a bit like a business from time to time. And I, again, there's no reason why not to give it a try and see what it could bring us. It might set a precedent for more fiscal agility in the future. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. So are you saying all of that 250,000 could be pulled out tomorrow with no interest?
I'm sorry, was that a question for me? It's so hard to hear.
No, you're good.
This is, this is an extremely low risk situation. And it's not the certificate of deposit, the concept of a CD that I brought with. And that is not even remotely what I have a problem. What I have a problem with is that we as a town are at a squeeze right now financially and the DDA is bathing in $500,000 of cash and not getting a project done. That's what I'm frustrated by, right? And all that money could have been collected over the last 17 years by the town and wasn't, right? And that value has been sequestered in a particular organization that has a particular set of interests. That bugs me and that is why I'm against it.
I hear what you're saying. I know the particular set of interests I'm not clear on, but everything else you said, I'm very clear.
I mean, this is another conversation and I think we should have somebody come from the DDA to explain how it works. This isn't money that Tom would have. It was a specific, it's a specific vote for the DDA that was given to give this money. And it expires at a certain point and it goes back to the voters. And then nobody will have the money if it doesn't pass. Tom won't have it either. And I, I think it's, it's a little, I don't know what the word is, but to think that the BOT could tackle on all the projects that the DDA has taken on when I don't think we have the bandwidth to do what they do. And I mean, you know, I could say the same thing about the other organizations that we have, all the different little committees that why aren't they getting more done? Why aren't they getting more done? You know, but I know it's human powered, volunteer powered and it gets, it gets done, you know.
And the members of the DDA have changed over the last two years, three years, five years. It hasn't been one group for 17 years that's sequestering funds.
Well, I think, I think what I'd like to request is that at some point in the distant future, and you guys come back and just educate us more on the money side and on the DDA. And I would, I would just, you know, regarding the CD, it seems extremely low risk. I see that one of the primary objectives of the DDA is liquidity. I just, I don't believe it's necessary. That's what I said.
There's a question still on the table that I'd like to answer. And that was, could you access the CD without a penalty? Yes, you could cancel the entire thing tomorrow. You'd not receive interest because you would have taken the money. But there would be no penalty whatsoever to take the CD what's in it at any time.
Thanks, Ron.
I, I think we, we need to clarify the property taxes involved in the NDDA because I think there's a misconception, but, yeah. The property tax that everyone pays in town, there's that property tax. And in the central business district, in the, the district covered by the NDDA, all those property taxes go to the NDDA and that's the TIF funds.
Not all, it, it's not all of the property taxes, just to be clear. There, we still pay for school, fire, et cetera. There, there is still a cut. It's.
Correct. But, but the, the property tax that I pay at my home in Big Springs that goes to the town in Netherland. If I was in the central, in the district covered by the NDDA, that money would go to the NDDA and not to the town. And then there's another small.
If it's a residence, it would still go to the town. If you had a commercial property, residential properties in the DDA district, they do not pay the TIF tax.
I, I think they, they do. Maybe, but.
They did at the onset of the thing and there was objection by some property owners. And so the, the town relieved them of paying that tax. So eventually that's true. But somewhere, I think, five to seven years into the life of the DDA, residences were removed. But I'll check on that.
Yeah, I'd like some confirmation on that. And then there's a small tax that the, and that the NDDA district taxed themselves to pay for administration of the funds. So, so Tanya. The mill levy. And so, so if there wasn't an NDDA, that $500,000 would be in the town's coffers. So we would be.
There would be no tax to go into the town's coffers. The DDA taxes are additional tax on the people who voted upon themselves.
That's only the administrative.
Only the mill levy.
Only, yeah. But I, I think that it's best for us to get the expert in. And Kate's going to arrange that for a future meeting.
So what, what is the final answer there?
We're, we're about, we're about to vote. I'm going to throw an idea.
No, I mean, on, on the, the mill levy, when does that come back up to the voters?
Twenty years. The DDA expires.
So you buy those institutions 2025.
You can see the, the, if you look at the NDDA page under funding and projects, it says the DDA is funded through two methods, a mill levy for operating purposes and tax increment financing. The mill levy is a self imposed tax approved by voters within the DDA district, which is voted on every seven years. Tax increment financing is a unique tool allowed by state law for communities to cashier a portion of property tax from designated area so that the money can be reinvested in that area. So that's the bulk of the money in, in the DDA is from that TIF.
That's calculated based on the future increase in property taxes over the duration of the TIF financing period, which is 20 years. So that's 20 years of increases in property taxes that aren't going to town. It's not that complicated, actually, right? I mean, it is the town's money that's being used for a specific purpose and it's being used for public improvements. But I don't think it's a great funding mechanism and I don't think that it's been that effective over the last 17 years. And so I'm generally against it.
So and the, and the BOT manages, manages that money on recommendations from the DDA. So really, it's our responsibility to make sure that that money is spent.
Indeed. And TIF financing can only be used in the district which TIF is being done. So it does limit the funding. It can't be used elsewhere.
Also, I think we need to move ahead with the vote. I'm ready to talk. I guess it's a little, I was going to say one idea. And that's why I'm not all day. Is that, you know, I, I think part of it for me is I don't see it as necessary and it's about liquidity. It's about spending money to make things happen. It's about maybe putting half this money into the CD and the other half, spending it on something soon that we need. That's just my crazy idea.
Listen in front of us.
Tom, is your mic on?
It's on. What we're being asked to sign tonight is a very, a much narrower issue than.
Microphone system.
Can you be closer to your microphone?
Okay. Tonight, our, our job is to, is to decide if we agree with what the DDA is recommending. And I for one do, I, I move that we authorize the NDDA to, to purchase this certificate of deposit at South Florida Bank. That's it.
I second that.
So we have a, a motion on the floor and a second to, for us to approve that the NDDA increased their certificate of dump deposit at South Florida Bank by 250,000 dollars. Correct. Would you take the roll, please?
Trustee Coombs is now.
No.
Trustee Blakenmore.
No.
Trustee Corvallon.
Yes.
Trustee Severs.
Yes.
Mayor Prosthamhold.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
No.
Motion passes four to three.
Thank you. So that concludes our latest action item and it's tonight's agenda. Why don't we take a short recess and then we'll come back for SKRs and get to the end of things. Thanks everyone for your time and we look forward to the DDA coming back and educating us more.
Thank you. What is Kayla doing? It looked like surfing.
Just giving us some exercise tips.
Exactly. Oh, wow, excellent.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate everything so far. And so, let's go ahead and move into our discussion items. We have two discussion items. Short-term rental ordinance review. That's what we're going to start with now, 7.2. I just wanted to, and let's see, the aim will be both Miranda and Tanya will talk to us about the aim. I just want to say upfront, I think, in general, we just want to have a general conversation about SDRs, and hear ideas, and hear concerns, and drill into things as we need, but maybe mostly get a sense of where people are at, and what they think about the present STR ordinance as it is, whether it's working or what may be tweaking. Go ahead.
Trustee Corvallan, do you want to... So, I just prepared the aim on behalf of Trustee Corvallan. I was going to let her present, unless you want me to, to share anything specific.
I can present. I mean, I'll just start off, and you can add in where I mess up. I was, just wanted to bring the conversation back up, because I do think it needs some tweaking. I'm going to preface the conversation that I'm not and never have been against short-term rentals. I think they are an important part of this community and provide a really great service. I personally stay in SDRs when I travel often, and there's a huge value to them. But I think there are some ways that we can tweak it to keep, keep it under more control. But the first one is pretty much very straightforward, with just a prohibition of outdoor wood-fired pits, you know, that are in whole-house rentals, not, not necessarily in, you know, shared homes, or ADUs where the homeowner is present. But when there is no homeowner present, it seems a little bit risky to have people who aren't familiar with fire and our wind, and how to probably put out a fire pit, you know, having parties around them without the homeowner present. So, that's the number one, that's the one thing I wanted to discuss. The second one is, you know, I was just sitting around, trying to think of ways to keep more of an organization with the short-term rentals, where to kind of discourage investors from buying houses in Netherlands just to instantly short-term rental, because that is still happening. People who aren't part of the community, who, you know, a lot of the arguments for short-term rentals have always been to help people stay in their homes, you know, retired people who want to start traveling but want to keep their home, or all kinds of reasons why you would want to short-term rental your house. But just to have investors come into town with money to buy houses, and, you know, subsidizing the mortgage, if they even have one, by the rentals, causing, you know, some complaints within the neighborhoods and neighbors. I wanted to discourage that, so I had the one idea that we can discuss or not, was to have a waiting period of when you can come and get a license after you purchased your home. It could be a year, it could be five years, it could be six months. But just so to, so somebody can't just, this would be for a whole-house rental, not, not for a ADU or partial home rental. I don't, I feel like those should be pretty much unrestricted as they are right now. Just a waiting period. You can't just buy it and then walk to the town and get your license and fill it out and instantly start renting it. So, that's why I think a waiting period might be beneficial, or perhaps less controversial even than that, would be just coming with a cap of how many rentals we will allow in this community, and leave it at that. And we could prioritize, you know, if it came to the point where we reached our max, of who do we give the license to? It would be people who have owned the home for longer. Could be a criteria. I don't see why that would be something to be discussed too indepthly. For, like, I don't think it's too controversial. It makes sense. You've owned your home 10 years, you've owned the house one month. Who do you give the license to? Well, the 10-year person. That's just because I want to help the people who live in this town, more than I want to help people who have just moved to this town and are just doing this to make money and not really care much about the community. That's my perception, and those are the two things. And then, I wanted to add one more, if there was time. I don't like how the current policy doesn't allow for any ADUs to be short-term rentals. I feel like, if anything, that is something we should be encouraging, either the short-term rental or long-term rental, but we should come up with ways to make it easier, and this is a multi-conversation, because I think we should make it easier and incentivize people to build ADUs and allow those to be short-term rentals. But perhaps we could create an incentive for people who long-term rental it, like, you know, waive PIF fees or whatever. That's a whole nother conversation. But I, in this ordinance that we currently have, we don't allow for any ADU short-term rental, and I don't understand why on that. So, those are the three things. Only two are in the aim, so we don't have to talk about them all. But thank you, guys.
Oh, sorry, Trustee Corvallan, I just want to add the one clarification. A Class A license is for detached ADUs. Your attached ADU is like your downstairs apartment. Those are allowed under primary rent license. It would be any sort of detached ADU that current...
Yeah, detached is what I'm talking about. Like, an apartment over your garage that's not attached to your house. If I understood correctly, you can't not, you cannot short-term rental that right now.
That is correct. That is an active license.
Right. I don't, I don't understand why, personally, but that is not in the aim, so we don't have to talk about that. But that is something that I feel like needs tweaking in the STR ordinance. So, that's it.
Miranda, are you saying that an ADU above a garage is considered detached?
That is considered detached under the current definitions in our ADU application of what is considered an entity detached ADU.
Okay. And, and the other thing I wanted to note is that detached ADUs can be rented long-term, correct?
Yes.
As well as secondary homes of Class B. And I think to the question of why, and I wasn't here, I came at the end of that discussion, but I think that the point was to try to encourage Class A, Class B license holders who weren't registered at the time to long-term rent those styles of houses, whether it's their secondary home or if they're detached.
Well, I mean, I, maybe it's possible that there's some things that we all have general agreement on. We don't need to talk about too much. So, maybe we could try to suss that out before we get in-depth into questions. Like, I'm wondering, on this, on this ADU question of detached ADUs, like, I kind of feel like Tanya is absolutely right. We should lift that restriction and allow those to be STR. Those seem like the circumstances that would be most beneficial for current residents who own property in town, who might want to continue to live in town and might not necessarily have the finances to do so otherwise. I know people like this who live in the area personally, that would be absolutely shocked if they weren't renting out their detached ADU. So, it seems to me that we should change that, and I just wonder if everyone else feels the same.
Yeah, I mean, I know they've set a precedent, and I think I think about this more, the long-term rental mind frame with regards to affordable housing, but the county changed the precedent, starting at the area of Marshall Fire, to allow ADUs where they didn't before, and that's kind of opening it up to the rest of the county. And it could be setting precedent that we take a look at, where we is challenging right now to build an ADU in some conditions here in this town, and I...
But if you already had one.
Yeah, no, so, so I'm kind of talking about long-term rentals, bringing it back. But if you already have one, I'm hearing what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't have any objections to short-term renting and ADU, but I think maybe what we were getting at, Billy, is that when we started looking at removing barriers for affordable housing, one would, one would be to make ADUs more cost-effective for long-term rentals, so that you could supply housing for both, you know, people renting the ADU and would decrease the housing cost for the owner. So, and doing that, you know, would be things like reducing PIF fees, lowering water and wastewater costs. And so, you know, would we then differentiate between on short-term detached ADUs and long-term rental detached ADU? So...
I mean, I would. If, if something were being built, not allow that to be short-term rented if we were going to give them a break on PIF fees and water rates and all kinds of other ways to incentivize long-term rentals. But again, some people just want the short-term, because they don't want a permanent tenant in their house all the time, or yard.
Right, and some of these properties, you know, the ADUs are, they're pretty close, you know? It is, and sometimes can be an issue, like, you don't necessarily want to live right next to another family or person in that kind of proximity on your own property. I can understand wanting to STR that in order to make ends meet, in order to stay in the town, especially if you're a longtime resident. I think that flexibility should be there for folks who own residential properties. So, I, I agree with Tanya's that additional third point, that we should, we should see something from town staff, and I think we should not afford now just say, yes, we'd like to see a policy that amends that part of code.
I give my nod.
Well, I think we already have code to allow for that, and it just got canceled. And, and then, we could just reinstate the code that's already there, if I'm not mistaken.
And if there is this concern about, you know, PIFs or whatever, or maybe for new builds, you know, there could be, like, you could just put something in there, like, five years before you STR or something, for your eligible license. I don't know, something like that.
Something like that. That's what I was thinking.
Or anything currently constructed, I don't think that should be the case.
Yeah, I think, I think regarding, like, you know, the future bills, we, that's a whole different conversation with changing code, which I'm all for, but let's not go there too, too much time.
You don't want to? So, okay, but that was, that was good.
Nicole, any comments or any thoughts from you? And I do want to get some public comment.
Yeah, so, the, you know, with the detached ADUs, yeah, I could definitely get there very quickly and easily. You know, I did have some questions regarding the, the other two proposed solutions, Tanya, that I would just love some clarity on. So, for the homeowner to live in the house for maybe a certain amount of time is one of your proposed solutions. And Miranda had given us, like, the, you know, there's 40... And Miranda had given us like the, you know, there's 40x number of, you know, STRs or whatever, so what line item does this, would this affect? Like, what number would these proposed solutions actually affect?
That would be the number of homes that are whole-house rentals. So I don't know if Miranda has that information available.
14?
Yeah, so it's my understanding that it would be the primary resident, host not present, that Jesse Corbeline is interested in, because the Class B is no longer available, and then when you have a whole-sess presence, that means obviously the owner is on site at all times.
Okay, so we'd be talking about 14 properties potentially, am I reading that correctly, Miranda?
That's 14 currently registered.
Okay, gotcha. All right.
14 registered is not the same as how many properties might be doing this.
Right, so we, you know, we probably handle every week a handful of STR inquiries, and maybe seeing a definite increase in applications. And so, yes, that's 14 as of now, but we are seeing that's an increase as time goes on.
So, so I looked up how many households we have in town, and it was 645. And so if we look at, we have 40 SGRs right now, that's 6.2%. I think if we put a cap on the whole-house SGRs, we need to look at a pretty small number, I believe.
That was one of the other questions I had, Tanya, was, was this total inventory, household inventory?
Well, the cap, the cap comment or the fire pit?
Yeah, for the cap.
Um, that is to be discussed. I think, I think mainly my main concern are the whole-house rentals, so the owner not present, so it's not, at this point, only 14 or 15 that are registered, so not that So I, we could, I mean, that's a conversation, I don't have a personal, too strong a preference. Initially, I was just thinking, you know, all short-term rentals and cap it at 10%, call it good. But then again, you know, if I want, you know, maybe we shouldn't limit somebody who just wants to rent a bedroom out of their home to make ends meet, it's not taking away housing from anybody or anything. So I think we should just maybe be the owner not present and come up with a, a number that seems reasonable to... So, yeah, you're right, 14 out of 600, it's not very much.
Yeah, it's about 2%.
I mean, I wouldn't want it more than, what is the math on that? Who's got, who's good at math?
It's been 2%.
2%? Yeah, so, I mean, what, I mean, 5% would be a ton.
So, let me throw out an idea, and that is to phase out the whole-house SGRs, so that those whole houses are available for long-term renters. So it would be like not giving additional licenses at this point.
I'm not, I'm not personally in favor of that, it's a little extreme. That's my personal.
And what, and could you explain why you did a little thing?
Well, I'm very against somebody buying a house and instantly short-term renting, because I don't feel like they're part of the community, any, but I, personally, I could see myself, and I know other people who like to travel and might get to a point in their life where they have more flexibility with work and might want to travel a few months out of the year but still keep their roots here. They might have family in the area, or just, you know, Ned, I've been in it 25 years, I own another town, that's my town, you know, so, but why shouldn't I, why should my house just sit empty for two, three months while I personally am traveling when that could actually help finance my trip and provide housing for tourists that do help the, I mean, I do agree that short-term rental people do go shop and eat at restaurants and are not a total drain on the economy or the community. It just has to be a balance, that's all. And that's why mainly I wanted to, I really do like, personally like the idea of a waiting period before someone can short-term rental a house, because I'm not, I have seen people buy houses in my neighborhood and put it on the short-term rental market instantly, and I don't feel like that's really that great. But I do also see the value of a short, whole-house rental. I mean, two, three families rented and have the most wonderful time in Netherlands, and if you don't have any of those, well, that's, that's denying that aspect of why short-term rental houses are good. So I think there's a balance to be struck, maybe we are at the perfect number, 2%, maybe raise it to 3%, and that would keep, you know, I worry about it if new developments were to occur, what's to keep those from becoming instantly little ski chelés, you know? And that's why I think we need a cap. That's, that's what I'm thinking, so let's-
I wouldn't mind, get some public comment on this.
Yeah.
I'd like to open this up for public comment.
Can I make a comment? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, this is Tony. Over in, well, there's one thing about the ADUs. I don't know if in the, in the town of Ned, everything is on city water, but if it's on a well, the wells are not legally meant to have a paying guest in the ADU, either, either full-time or short-term. And the Division of Water Resources told Gilpin County that in, in December, because they were encouraging ADUs for people to rent them out, but it's technically a well violation. Nothing's been done about it, and it might just be let go and nothing will happen, but technically it's illegal to charge money for an ADU if you have a well. You know, unless the well is specifically, unless that's on the permit, but about 99% of the wells it's not. It's just for the main house, and the, and the guest house is for a non-paying guest, like a mother-in-law, you know? That's why they call it a mother-in-law. So it's just something, if, if there are ADUs in the town that have a well, and we approve them to have either a full-time renter or a short-term rental, it's a violation of the well permit. It's just something we should know in case we pass a new law, and it's a well, you know?
Who's the agency then?
The Division of Water Resources. So they told Gilpin County in December, you know, to not encourage people to, you know, short-term rental their guest house on the garage, because it's not in compliance with the well permit. So, I mean, I don't think they're going to come out and enforce that, but it is the law, you know?
Miranda, do we have any homes on wells? I didn't think so.
We have, I mean, the Board of Trustees granted a variance recently to allow a home to go on a well, but it's very few and far between.
Okay. And I know most of the houses are on city water, so it might not matter, but it's just something that came up in Gilpin last year.
Tony, does that also include people who rent long-term then, since they're making money?
Yeah, yeah, they're not supposed to charge money for long-term, which is, I mean, a lot of them do.
Sure, yeah.
And, you know, and there could be hundreds of them, but technically they're not supposed to, according to the Division of Water Resources. So, you know, and some of the best short-term rentals in Gilpin are on top of garages, and they're booked year-round, you know? You know, so I just, but I don't know if they're going to do anything over there about it.
Thanks, Tony, I appreciate the comment. Any other, do we have any other public comments out there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
This is, this is Andrew Dure again. So I was able to, was fortunate, and just recently built, built a home in Ned, and have a, built a mother-in-law suite below, and I would say that as far as some things that should be considered would be, you know, and again, I haven't, maybe this is all already out there and considered, but as far as, you know, indoor air quality, like, there should be a basic metric and, and testing for, you know, whether it's radon and/or indoor air quality and/or any, any normal, you know, habitable rooms that would be passed, just like a, a house, but that these would be, you know, part, part and parcel of being able to get a, whether it's a short-term or a long-term license, and then, you know, as far as, you know, I've not dealt with any short-term renters, but I, you know, I have heard just as far as, you know, impact on the streets, and I, I know that, you know, we've got a certain amount that, that we're charging for, for every bedroom per, per night, but, you know, I would just hope that regarding, you know, safety, that, you know, egress, egress windows are looked at, you know, carbon monoxide, radon, fresh air, those are all things that are taken into consideration, normal, normal health and, and building inspection things are taken into consideration, and then, you know, be it well or water, waste, infrastructure, you know, somehow we can calculate those to make sure that the town isn't getting the short end of the stick on, on subsidizing those. That's, that's about all I wanted to add. Thanks.
Good, good comment, thanks. Yeah, I think with a new code, 2018 code, there would have to be a new code, I can't remember specifically, it's all, one doesn't apply, but there would be checks and balances with the code, and indoor air quality, and most of every other element we construct.
Do we have anything like that in place right now for any of our rentals?
Just a second, can we stick with public comment and then we'll come back?
Okay.
Any other public comments on the run, or you'd like?
Yeah, this is James Mall, I'm from Ned, can you hear me okay?
Do you mind, well, yeah, someone's in the room who's been kind enough to sit down twice, we'll see if he can stay. Ron, you want to go ahead, or you want to let James go first? Oh, James, go for it.
Okay, okay, cool. First, I just want to say, trustee Tanya, I can't pronounce your last name, apologies, but I think this is something phenomenal to put on the agenda, because I think it is a big issue, and I think it addresses, because I think the two biggest detriment to a community that I see from Airbnbs is that they raise housing prices because you have investors, so they're figuring out the return on investment and also adding that into the housing price. So that's a huge problem, and, and also it reduces supply of available housing, but also a third point that you kind of touch on by your proposal of the, I think he said 8%, and, but, but, but the third point anyway, is community, is that it's important to have community, and I've seen a lot of communities that I've lived in be completely destroyed by going too far in the direction of allowing short-term rentals, and Ned is a wonderful place that has been able to keep that under control. So I, I think, I just, I just wanted to say, like, I totally support what you're trying to do, and I think it's a good way to kind of open the discussion and to figure out kind of minutia and how to move forward to, so that short-term rentals don't have the detrimental impact on Ned.
Thanks, James. Ron, do you want to give us your public comment and then we'll bring it back up to them?
Short-term rental issue originally came up, the two big things were just what he said, community, but also bad conduct from the short-term renters. They're misogynist, I'd like to see if you would consider putting in a clause in the contract with people who do have short-term rentals, that those tenants understand that, or those guests understand they're not tenants. I had a short-term rental where the guest wanted him extended, and the minute he'd extended to five weeks, he claimed he was a tenant, he was an absolute nuisance in the neighborhood, and I had to go through an eviction process to get him out, and it wasn't fun, it was expensive, but the really sad thing was it was hardship on the neighborhood. And I'm very conscious of my neighbor's feelings and their rights, and this guy really made a mockery of the situation by invoking tenant laws after you've been there five weeks. So it took me 60 days to get him out. And if you put in the clause that every guest understands that he's not a tenant under the very circumstances, it will actually help those people who have short-term rentals to be good neighbors.
Are there any other public comments out there, folks online?
Start six reminder?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yes, Kim Goho, resident of town in Netherlands. I just have a few things, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Sorry.
Okay, I had some feedback there. I just had a few things to offer here. It just seems like, especially in regards to the fires, that it seems to be dealing with a tiny amount of short-term rentals, if not maybe one property that is a problem. And so for me, I would just prefer that the process is in place, including the police department could be dealing with that, because it feels like a bigger issue when people talk about it, but it sounds like maybe one property. And I also worry a little bit about setting a certain set of criteria for whole-home rentals, and how are they going to regulate that? I also feel like they're having a hard time regulating what they're already dealing with, because I, I think that in previous discussions, you know, the, the money that the labor tax is supposed to pay for somebody to deal with that regulation, I don't know if that's happening, so just wanted to throw that out there. Also, I have a, a little bit of a problem with that short-term rentals are kind of the devil in this scenario, and long-term rentals are like, oh, the angel in this scenario. And I look at my neighborhood, and there's about five long-term rentals in my neighborhood, and, and there's no regulation there at all, and they're not contributing to the schools like on the ballot, for example, that, you know, that they're the re, that, that short-term rentals are the reason that they don't have children in the, in the school, and the curriculum is a problem because of short-term rentals. So I just have a problem with a lot of, of the wording and the, the belief that short-term rentals are a problem in this community, and no one's really looking at the long-term rentals, so just wanted to point that out. And, and in terms of my neighborhood, none of the long-term rentals near me, and there are five, none of them have kids in school, none of them are contributing to, to, to the things that, that the Board of Trustees are looking for, and-
Exit does three minutes.
There's something else, but, oh, and also, a lot of the, the short-term rentals that are available in the town have been really, really drilled down to them, they are not available to long-term rentals. So the, the, the idea that all of, all of us, short-term rentals, could be converted to a long-term rental is false. So we are not taking-
Anyone else out there with, with public comment?
All right, Billy, it's hard to hear, so I don't think the previous speaker heard you saying anything.
We're going to go ahead and close public comment unless I just someone out there and bring it back for a- bring it back for our final, so relatively quick discussion because we have more.
One of the things that maybe Tanya, I don't know, the thought exercise that you and I could do or whatnot is to look at what could be the impact if there is a, a waiting period on, you know, short-term rentals or, you know, homeowners, like what exactly is the impact to the economy on that? The fiscal impact, um, you know, that it's, it's, you know, what do we gain? What do we lose? Kind of a thing. I'd be interested in knowing what that is. That's one of the comments. And my guess is, and just to kind of understand your proposed solution number one a little bit more is the idea that if you gave a waiting period, that those folks would use the rental for long-term?
No, I think they wouldn't buy the house. I'm talking about a small amount of, you know, people who just have literally bought the house and are renting it short-term. Um, I think the majority of people who are short-term rental houses are people who have lived in the area a long time and who are now moving on and not needing to live in the house full-time anymore, but don't want to give it up. Um, and that I fully was, that's kind of what I was planning to Karen. I don't want to totally get rid of short-term rentals. They're not, they have a great place for people who are, have been homeowners. I just think that if they knew they couldn't instantly short-term rental it, they might not buy the house. Or some people, you know, that's just what I was, there's no, I don't have any evidence to say that. Um, they might buy it and just have it sit empty and have it be their weekend house. Um, they might, I mean, doubtfully would long-term rental it, I'm thinking, because these are people who want to come up occasionally, second homeowners. So, um, I think that would probably be, well, either they wouldn't buy it or it would sit empty. So that, that's all I was thinking. It might deter somebody from just buying the house for a second home as a way to subsidize their second home. And I don't think it would be impact, it wouldn't really impact most of the licenses that we currently have giving to people. I do think the majority of our short-term rental licenses are from people who have lived in the community for a bit of time. Just like, you know, I think, oh, we build these apartments. And then someone might be like, great, it's a perfect little ski weekend place for myself. And I'll just short-term rental and they'll just buy it because like I can afford it if I rent it for this amount of time of a year, you know? So if you make them wait, they might still do it or they might choose not to. And they might go to Copper Mountain instead or something. And then, um, I just kind of wanted to respond about the outdoor, why I put, wanted this to be as a regulation. I had, um, a neighbor tell me that when there was a fire pit unattended at, um, our neighbor's house, they did call the police. And because there was no fire, there was a level one fire ban, so which means you can't have a fire pit in a home. They said, well, there's nothing we can do about it. It's totally legal. You can't have a fire. So if there were something that they had to enforce, like, well, you know, you can't have one in a short-term rental, then they could actually enforce it and ask the people to put it out. But in this situation, um, there, it was, I think, a windy night and they had a big fire and it was a big party. And I think that's fine, um, for most people. But I just trust, don't necessarily trust people from out of town on their fire knowledge. Um, they don't, I mean, I don't know what other way you make them pass a test. I mean, come on, that's ridiculous. So that was it. There was nothing the police could do because it was only a level one fire ban. And it's allowed. So I just thought, okay, well, if you just don't allow it, then there's not even a discussion. And yeah, it will only impact the fourteen homes and maybe only half of them even have a fire pit. So it's not that big of a deal one way or another. But it just gives them something to work with if we did have to call the fire department.
I know it's not public comment and I apologize. So I, I don't want to overstep my bounds, but I, I did want to add something.
We did close.
Okay, nevermind.
Well, I'm, I'm not totally against the idea of enacting something similar to a stage two fire ban just for STR. And if that's something that the board is interested in, I wouldn't be completely against that. Think it's a reasonable proposal by Tanya there. Yeah, you could use a outdoor fire pit that is permanent, gas towered. Something like that, no problem. But open wood fire. Not worth the risk because it doesn't, you know, doesn't really matter how many homes it affects. In terms of who actually has the fire pit, but how many homes it affects it. Something that's wrong.
Eric, we can just barely kind of hear some of it. Were you differentiating between like a solid fuel fire, like wood versus gas?
It was, it was, it was saying that maybe the town could, what the specific level restrictions that county uses and other municipalities and, and entities, and, and some of those allow for gas, but don't allow for solid fuel. And, um, just saying that, not getting column so much in the number of homes that have the option to burn wood, but just realizing how many homes would be affected if a fire started. It only take one mistake to do that.
What are we trying to achieve here?
That? Thank you. I actually wanted to go back to the question because we did keep this very intentionally as a, um, discussion item and specific questions before the board is discussion items. So, so, um, it's not next item at this point, but does the DOT agree with the amendments recommended by trustee Corvallin? Are there any other changes the DOT would like to see? SDR ordinance. I know we stated one with existing ADUs and I, um, I agree myself with, with the fire, um, it's kind of a no-brainer. But it may be that we have to do something beforehand.
Well, yeah, I think we, we just need to direct town staff to give us a policy to discuss that's more fleshed out the next time this comes up.
Yeah. So whether it's just an all-on ban or some kind of level system that the town controls. And then the other recommendation I said by ADUs. And then, and then this, this other, we have to decide what we want to direct town to do or not do regarding people buying homes for the explicit purpose of an STR. It's a kind of waiting period. Maybe we could look into what would be the financial impacts. I know Jennifer brought that up about really better study and idea of what these, the real impact is.
Or, or the other one is just a cap.
Nicole said over time, um, you know, really looking at what, what's the real impact of people starting to rent or not renting over excellent.
And the other thing is the cap. Do we want to explore what that would look like?
Could we incorporate this as part of the housing study?
Oh, so, uh, good question. I don't know.
There was.
Because it does seem like what, what the impact is, like, it's not just to the bottom line of our town budget, right? Like there's, there are many other impacts this might have. So what the impact is on availability of housing, because what's the point in passing a law that has no impact on the availability of housing? Like it'd be nice to have somebody do a study on that and really see.
I saw the housing assessment. They did have, they called out ADUs.
I, I did have a, a study that I did because I, I, I actually did an inventory of short-term rentals in September of twenty nineteen when we were going through this process, including regulations in place. Um, ten percent of our housing stock was short-term rentals at that time. Um, we had seventy-three STR listings, twenty-eight, which were purple house ADU and forty-five were whole house rentals. We're down to fourteen.
We're down to fourteen licenses. We're not down to fourteen listings.
Yeah, it's a big difference.
Well, I, I do know, um, a, a few houses that were, um, whole house, uh, short-term rentals, um, by an investor who lived out of town. And one was just right next to me and another one was along dress forward. But so I think our regulations did have an impact on the housing stock. And also the other things like community and housing prices. But I felt, I felt a difference in community by having someone, um, long-term renting and then an owner in the house next to me. So as opposed to people coming in.
Yeah, my logical, my instincts, I've got my common sense that that is the case. Um, what I don't know is what number to put things at, right? Like if we were going to do a percentage cap, if we're going to do a waiting period, if we're going to do any of these proposals, I don't have a great sense in my brain of what would be the most effective and reasonable because I just don't have, I know in my, like, I know that it will have an impact. I just don't know what.
Yeah, um, the, a couple of other things I wanted to mention was, um, it, it seems like we want the fire ban to be, um, when the host is not present there because I, I think,
Yeah.
e- even if it's a host-owned home, um, you know, they might be out, you know, out to dinner or something. And the renters don't have really the, the knowledge and skill to be dealing with an open fire in this scenario. Another thing is, um, just, I don't know if everyone knows the cutoff point between short-term rental and long-term rental is thirty days. And, um, but yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the cap, with the, um, fire ban, allowing short-term rentals with ADUs. As I think that's an interesting idea that Tanya has to, um, prioritize people who have lived here longer for the, um, whole house rentals. I wonder if other municipalities have done that. I can't envision any issue with it, but, um, maybe there are some that we haven't thought of.
So one of my thoughts would, if you prioritize people who have lived here longer, um, lived here how, I mean, just because they have a domicile here, they could be, that could be their second home, right? It could be, there, there's, there's a little bit more nuance, I think, that's enveloped in that, um, in terms of whether or not they, if they've lived here for ten years, but how have they lived here for ten years could be a nuance.
Yeah, that's tricky. I mean, I don't know if we have the staff to, you know, or the,
Right.
I don't, I don't know if we could go with that picky.
Yeah. And well, and so it's what, what resources do you want to use to tackle what? Um, I, I'm for the, you know, the fire ban. But when it comes to a waiting period, um, I, I feel like I need more data. I don't know that having people wait two to five years, if that, if they, my feeling is that we might lose more in terms of sales tax, we might lose more in terms of the occupational tax, we might lose more, um, in that regard rather than, um, uh, yeah, so that's, I, that's my concern there. And then the percentage of the cap, um, I also would need more data. I don't think eight percent is the right number. Um, we just did some quick math here and it was like two percent, right? And so I think we need more information.
Yeah, I guess when I said eight percent, I was thinking of, um, both ADU and whole house rentals. Um, but in reality, I don't think we should limit if somebody wants to rent out their room in their house. So then the whole house rental is probably where we need to focus our energy on, and that would be a much smaller number. Yeah.
I have a question, a real quick, Miranda, if we're like tasking staff to get us more information? Do you have the bandwidth? Like who, who wants staff? What are you going to do to give us more information?
Yes. Well, I think we would do, uh, municipal, we would research other municipalities, we'd see what they have and come back with a recommendation. And then I think Macy would take the lead on that because Macy currently handles all short-term rental licensing.
I like that.
And it's just another comment. I, I, I know that it surfaced like how many, um, actual STRs we have in town versus, um, what's listed. And at first glance, when you look at something like AirDNA, which pulls VRBO and Airbnb, the, the misrepresentation of data is that it pulls for the entire zip code. And so when you pull for the entire zip code of eight zero four six six, it looks like there's eighty-three, ninety listings. But again, when you're only talking about the borders of town, I was doing some quick math and it looked like maybe there were ten properties that weren't accounted for in our numbers. So I just, I, I just put that out as just maybe.
Yeah, I, I think that's about right too, when I look.
Yeah, that also Macy and I started initializing and we do agree, one of the challenges we have in housing compliance is not every short-term rental lists their address for us. And so we try to basically drive around to figure out where this property is because your circle is going to be huge. It's basically all of Maryland. I'm looking somewhere here. And so figuring out where those ten properties and lack of addresses are is very challenging for us. And so we do have the need to report if they believe there's a short-term rental next door because that's going to be one of the ways in which we can evaluate if they are operating without a license.
And in no means do I want your time and resources driving around, you know, trying to figure out where these ten, you know, eight to ten properties are. Um, that is just not a good use. But I just, I think that that's gotten blown up and blown out a little bit on social media of like, there's all these properties out there that aren't represented. And I just don't think that's the case.
Agreed.
So, so.
I'd like to just direct staff to go ahead and look at, um, fire ban versus levels. Existing ADUs, being eligible, we really press the R's and then, you know, it sounds like you've gone as far as you can go with that regarding our own inventory, but maybe get a better sense of how other municipalities are handling this. And I'd like to direct that if you guys are good with it.
In particular, the, the results, if municipalities did enact anything similar, what happened?
Thanks.
And just add one thing, maybe we get a little bit more clear on the goal. Is the goal to, you know, um, decrease the amount of folks that are turning around really immediately and making STRs? Is the goal to increase affordable housing? I feel like we need to get a little bit more concrete on the goals and I'm not sure how to go from there. But what is it that we really want to obtain with a short-term rental amendments?
Well, uh, for me, the goal.
It's more on us than, than it's now for tonight's discussion. Uh, uh, and maybe we can, if someone wants to take the lead on doing that, that would be great.
I, I, I think if we look at the ordinance that we put in place, um, in twenty nineteen, you'll see the whereas, which defines why we were doing it.
I, I think for me, the cap is important more than anything because as she's saying, more and more applications are coming in. And if we don't have a cap, there's nothing to stop them from saying no. You're going to say yes, of course. And so there has to be a ceiling and we have to decide what that ceiling is. That's for a future conversation, I guess.
So I think the answer to the question, Nicole, I think is it's, it's a combination of tangibles and intangibles. Is to find the right balance between, uh, community, uh, concerns, set community safety and, um, potential revenue for the town. And we need to balance all of those things simultaneously and find the, find the right number.
Yeah. And revenue wasn't necessarily a part of that at the beginning. So if that's a part of it, let's just name it, right? This is.
I mean, I do, I do think it's, it has to be some part of the consideration. Though I do think the community interest and the community safety is probably, uh, slightly more important considering the low scale of the revenue that we get from, from STRs.
Sure.
I'm just looking at the ordinance here from twenty nineteen and says, um, whereas the board recognizes that a shortage of long-term residential housing opportunities exists when compared to prior years. And the board recognizes that long-term residential housing costs have increased when compared to prior years. And the board has received public comment related to a desire to preserve the residential character of the town. And so the board is enacting these regulations for the health, safety and welfare of town residents and visitors. That's okay.
Thanks. I'd like to move on. I think you've got something to work on and we can talk. All the humility Tanya will talk about, maybe somebody wants to take a lead on some of these other calls. Taking into consideration what's already. Um, our last discussion. Our last discussion item for tonight, 7.3 Good Neighbor Guidelines, starring Jesse.
Thanks. Appreciate the opportunity to present this topic. It's late and I'm getting tired and I don't want to extend this meeting and I would like to not go rush through this topic and thank to both of all this topic to later meeting. And if there's any other administrative stuff that we want to bang out before we go home, I will not vote to extend the meeting.
Or into the jury. That sounds good. I know we're pretty booked on November 1st, but we will get it in the air fast as soon as we can.
I do really love this and thank you for putting it to us. I think it's a great idea.
That's great.
Yeah, thanks. I've spoken with, I believe, all of you about this offline. I do feel it's why they supported and feel like we can progress and cultivate this theme as, as we move forward. I think Miranda and I can continue to do a little work offline and have a more fleshed out presentation that'll bring at a future date.
I especially like this, this handbook. I mean, that could even be left in STRs on the table.
The what?
One of the example booklets from the other counties. Yeah, and like how it went through, this is how you treat this and this is how you do this. I agree. I was thinking the same thing, Eric. It's a little booklet every STR gets.
So I'm, so I like this, I like this, look forward to talking about it in the future. I, I know we just talked to Restorative Justice woman, the woman who runs that in Estes Park, and she said that we would do well to hire a mediator, somebody to come up here and train people on mediation. That'd be an inexpensive step. You just really be out to recruit folks who'd be interested. But that's kind of a key component of this, of this. So it'd be good for you guys to talk some more about that too before.
Yeah, and I'm seeing a lot of nods and support, feeling, feeling supported by all of you in this. And also want to say thank you to Miranda for working hard and gathering up this stuff and dedicating your staff to helping us build this out. So appreciate it.
Almost everything in here is something that is like a, a direct, you know, one-to-one mapping to issues in our town. So, yeah, very timely.
Miranda, you have your hands on a lot of things you could do, so appreciate it.
Yeah, and I do just want to kind of comment on the mediation. So just really quickly, I met with the director of the restorative justice program in Estes Park and, and her recommendation was great to bring up a mediator trainer. And given the savings we have in the police department, I was talking with Mayor Billy and felt like this, in the next couple of months, let's try to get someone up here and set time for community members to come be trained because we do have the financial means under police department to do so this year.
Hey, Miranda, so when I went through that, it was a 40-hour training. Is this the equivalent or are we doing like a lightweight thing?
I haven't. So I reached out to the contact at Estes Park, shared with me, and I just did that today. And I haven't gotten back yet. So I would be curious, it's my understanding they've done like an adjusted training for their community, but there also is the more in-depth 40-hour training.
Okay, yeah, yeah, if we're creating actual mediators, certified mediators or community. Yeah, got it, got it. Thanks.
But the way with Estes Park is that they, they cover the cost for their community members to participate. And that would be my recommendation here, assuming we can do it under the 2022 budget. And maybe the health and human services fund.
Well, thanks. Appreciate touching base on this. Look forward to hearing more. We'll talk about it soon. And we, we just have staff reports and BOT reports, which we could bring in another legion another time if we haven't already. Are you good with that?
Yeah.
Any other business? Thank you, town staff. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, the big set will not hold.
Yeah.
Already.
I've been with the picture of the culvert from Lakeview and I didn't get a chance to have it to the pocket, but I will send it to you. It's, it's in rough shape and it's, you know, probably 10 years in the making in rough shape. And so, you know, that is something to be mindful of. A lot of the infrastructure that he's having to deal with didn't just happen, you know, the issues aren't just from yesterday. They are long-term issues that he's having to address. And we do, and Nikki put it in her report, we really are asking people to contact us when they're concerned. You can call us on call, you can email us, you can call into departments. We can't address things if we don't know about them. And unfortunately, our team is not large enough to drive all over town all day long. So we really need people to report things as they find them so we can prioritize.
Thanks, everyone. I move to it, Jared.
Second. Trustee yours?
Yes.
Trustee Leggorn?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Mayor President Holden?
Yes.
Trustee Kims Ismael?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin?
Yeah.
Trustee Stern?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.